We're starting! Good morning, everybody! So, good morning, everybody. We are beginning. Today is the first Sunday in Advents. Even though it is still November, we have our memory verse. Because I have the power to do it, because I'm the one that puts it together. Change your memory verse, reflect Advent, prepare for Christmas. Which is Isaiah 9:2. "The people walking in darkness have seen a great light; on those living in the land of deep darkness, a light has dawned." So let's say this together. "The people walking in darkness have seen a great light; on those living in the land of deep darkness, a light has dawned." Isaiah 9:2. For Heavenly Father, we give you thanks, as we prepare for the light to the world, amen. And we will come again, even as we explore it, for Christ's sake and for our own. All right, we got a Christmas hymn. Good morning, everybody!
She just told me to go upstairs.
Happy St. Andrew's Day, happy first Sunday in Advents. You ready? Okay, all right. We are in Acts, chapter nine. Okay, Acts, chapter nine. So we are following along with Paul, called Saul. Remember Saul and Paul are the same name, different languages. He had been, he met Jesus on the way to Damascus. He was blinded by the light after three days. The Lord sent Anias to him, laid hands on him. Things like scales fell from his eyes, he took an ache. There's a lot of reflecting of Jesus imagery here. Death in the tomb, 3A, things like that. But also, you know, Anias laying on the hands, praying. Paul was a chosen instrument. So Paul was anointed to be an apostle to the Gentiles. And he even says this in several of his letters. "I, Paul, am apostle to the Gentiles." He proclaims Jesus in the synagogue, synagogues in Damascus. Synagogues, is the word typically translated as congregations, by the way? Depending on context, they might translate it, they might not translate it. So much so that they plot to kill him, and he escapes. Right? They let him down through an opening in the wall, lowering him in a basket. Then we got through chapter, or verse 31. Where he then goes to meet with the Christians in Jerusalem. What would eventually be called Christians in Jerusalem, and they're like, hey, yeah, we know who you were before you left. Like, we're not idiots here. But it's Barnabas, son of encouragement, who takes Paul to meet with the apostles. And to meet with the Jewish leaders there. And I think we were in the middle of that. The Barnabas took him and brought him to the apostles and declared to them, "How on the road he had seen the Lord who spoke to him, and how at Damascus he had preached bodily in the name of Jesus, so went in and out among them at Jerusalem, preaching boldly in the name of the Lord. And he spoke and disputed against the Hellenists." So the Hellenists were Greek-speaking Jews, right? And so, why would, why would Paul be arguing with the Hellenists? Have you ever wondered about that? Why he's debating with the Hellenists?
Was it from their Greek mythology, all that worshiping statues? Did it have to do with that?
Uh, no. Remember, he is...
Is it because he knows Greek, because he's educated?
He's educated, right? Greek is the lingua franca of the Roman Empire, right? And we'll switch over to Latin in the, over the course of a couple centuries after this. But Greek is the lingua franca, in other words, the language of the day. In that area, Aramaic was also spoken. Hebrew was only reserved for rites in the temple. But Aramaic was spoken. So why he's arguing with the Hellenists is also tied back to, remember what Jesus says about him. "Go for he is a chosen instrument of mine to carry my name before the Gentiles." So Hellenists are Greek-speaking Jews. In other words, they are Gentiles, by and large, usually, that converted to Judaism. Not all of them, but a lot of them are, right? So yes, he knows rhetoric, which the Hellenists are gonna, some of them are gonna know that, right? And it's kind of a prelude to his wider ministry. Argue with the hell in a squirrel, what are you? But, but they were seeking to kill him, and the brothers learn this. They brought him down to Caesarea and sent him off to Tarshus, right? So wherever Jesus' name, so we're seeing more and more persecution starting to happen. And it's going from jailing to killing the leaders. "So the church throughout all Judea and Galilee and Samaria had peace and was being built up, and walking in the fear of the Lord, and in the comfort of the Holy Spirit, and multiplied." Now, that seems like an odd sentence to say, right after, but they were seeking to kill him. How do you go, they were seeking to kill him, but the church had peace and was being built up? Well, it's the second sentence here. "And walking in the fear of the Lord, and in the comfort of the Holy Spirit, and multiplied." We don't look to our earthly situations to see if the Lord favors us or not. If we were to look to our earthly situations to see if the Lord favored us or not, well, right now, the Lord would not be favoring the church in the West. Church attendance is declining. It was declining before COVID. COVID really kind of, you saw a steep decline with COVID. Basically, a bunch of people who were continuously Christians stopped, dropped the name altogether. Because it broke the habit of going to church. And so, if we were to look at that and say, well, this external situation here must tell us how God feels about us, well, then the Lord would be really, really angry at his church. But we also know in Scripture that there are always faithful people. And yet, there is times of apostasy. There are times of persecution. There are times of winnowing, and there's times of growth. So to sit there and say, without a word from the Lord, and apply his judgment to something specifically, is something we cannot do. Is the church faithful today? Yes, it is. Are there sections of the church that apostate today? Yes, there are. We don't base that, though, on whether the Lord is angry with us or not. We go to his word, right? If the church is being faithful to his word, then the Lord is happy with us. That doesn't necessarily mean that we'll grow numerically. And I say this as a pastor in the Lutheran Church of Missouri-Sinnett, who is a church body that since the nineteen seventies, or membership has happened. Around one point eight to one point five million members right now. Although, if you saw the Pew study, I think it was earlier this year, there is roughly three million people who identify themselves as LCMS Lutherans. They're not on our rolls, so they don't come to our churches. And the reason why that is, is that the Pew Research Study, there was, uh, some big flaws in methodology. Um, if you considered yourself a church nomination but not had, but not had been to that church in twenty years, you were considered a member of that church. Right? So according to the Pew, we have three million members. But if you look at actually our hard statistics that we keep track, no, we don't. Um, not anywhere close. So, um, there's a lot of fear and there's a lot of anxiety overall in the Lutheran Church of Missouri-Sinnett because of this, though. And if you go and you look at a lot of our churches, even the Oklahoma District, especially in the western half of the state, where, um, in, in like rural communities. Because the LCMS church was a church that was in inner cities and rural communities. Because the suburbs used to not exist very much. Um, and what happened is, is that with white flight in the nineteen sixties and seventies, well, we're a church body that's anywhere from ninety-five to ninety-eight percent white. So guess what happened to those churches? Everybody left. And then you have demographic, demographic decline in the rural areas. There's literally just less people living out there. So guess what happened to those churches? Um, and, and so there's a lot of fear and there's a lot of anxiety. And where that happens, people want to put forward reasons and blame for that. What's, um, interesting to note is if you look at the decline of the Eastern Roman Empire, Byzantine Empire, and as it starts to shrink, right? Well, people try to figure out a reason why. And they keep on blaming the practices of the church. And this is where you get the iconoclast controversy. Can you have icons? Can you not have icons? And several other controversies in Eastern Orthodoxy. And they're all trying to figure out, well, why is God angry with the Roman Empire? That they're losing territory and they're becoming smaller. And they keep on blaming church practices and blaming each other for not being faithful. And you look at how they make arguments, and you look at the reasons why they make arguments, and then you look at things that have been written since the nineteen nineties in the LCMS, and you find the same arguments being made, the same reasoning being made. Um, God gives growth. God gives growth. When we talk about evangelism, when we talk about outreach, we are talking about it from a human perspective. But we also, and, and so we will use a lot of terms, language, and things like that. But it's ultimately, it's God who gives the growth. You can invite a million people to church, not a single one shows up, right? You, you can do everything right. You can have a multi-million dollar marketing strategy, right? Knocking on doors. It's gonna be God who brings that person into church. Um, so in my role as the district evangelism executive, this is one of the things that I go in and I talk with churches about. Because a lot of times, nine times out of ten, when a church wants me to come out and talk, there is that fear behind it. We're a shrinking congregation and we gotta change something. And we gotta change something yesterday. So one of my first things to do is to go in and say, hey, listen, it's in the Lord's hands, alright? It's in the Lord's hands. We can look at some things, we can talk about some things. I can't promise anything. And anybody that comes in and promises you anything is lying. Flat out, straight out, they're lying. I can't promise you anything. We can look at how to be more engaged in the community. We can look into doing, um, you know, evangelism and outreach campaigns and, and kind of, uh, some focuses on that. And, and, you know, maybe there is a mindset that needs to change in the church or something else like that. But that's not a guarantee for anything. And I have to talk to that fear first. Because nobody wants their church to die. Nobody wants their church to close. But the promise given in Matthew, that the gates of hell shall not overcome this church, is not to a specific congregation. It's not even to a specific denomination. It is to the church. And I think of Elijah on the mount, or in the, in the, in the wilderness. "I've been faithful, everybody else has left, just let me die," right? And out of the over a million of people that live in the Kingdom of Israel at the time, what's he told? "I will spare three thousand, for they have not bent the knee to the Baals." So imagine that. Free, three thousand out of over a million. I mean, if you put that into seconds, three thousand seconds isn't even a day. And a million seconds is a few days.
But it's more than just one, and Elijah thought he was just one.
It is more than just one. It is more than just one. But, but what I'm saying is, is like, the, the, the point is, is that, you know, there are times and there are seasons when there's not a lot. Um, and, and you gotta think, each one of those people had to feel very, very lonely. Because in all likelihood, they weren't living around a lot of other people who were refusing to not worship the Baals and the Astras and the false gods, right? It'd be like, I mean, what, New York City has five million people in it? So fifteen thousand people all in New York City. Now, what's the likelihood that if you, if, if, if you did those statistics, that you would run into, and you were a Christian and you knew that there was fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine other Christians in New York City of the city of five million people, how confident would you feel about walking into another Christian? Yeah, I'm not taking those odds. Um, it is the Holy Spirit who gives us the peace because Christ has overcome the world. We are more than conquerors, right? Christ has overcome the world. And what, it sucks to watch churches, churches close. Our hope isn't in the doors or the building. And yeah, there, there are the emotions tied there of, um, especially if you grew up in that community and your grandparents grew up in that community, right? How many generations back in that community can you trace? And how many generations, like, can you go and you can open up the pictures and see your parents, your grandparents, your great-grandparents, and so on getting confirmed? And to sit there and say, well, now we can't afford to keep the doors open? Listen, I'm not, I'm not trying to belittle that pain at all. Um, but we don't look at that and sit there and say, well, they must have done something wrong. Because they could have still been doing everything right. It's not our job to come in and judge them. Um, there, there can, there, there's a million different reasons, but ultimately, it's at the Lord's direction.
Is it every Christian denomination that's shrinking? Because I think, God, look, if there's one that's growing, that's still God's church, because there's only one church.
So it depends on how you want to frame it.
Yeah, you guys are worldwide.
Worldwide, Lutheranism is exploding. There's five million Lutherans in Madagascar, which is more Lutherans than are currently in the United States. Right? There's like two million in Ethiopia. Yeah, there's a lot in, um, Ghana, right? Africa is exploding in Lutheranism. And a lot of Lutheran churches are pouring resources into Africa for, because of that very means, or that very reason.
But Pastor, isn't there a lot of, there's, I read an article in the Lutheran, well, I have it on my page, on my home, about people are getting killed because they confess. They're talking about the Lutheran, now, the Lutheran missionary gets killed.
In central Africa right now, there are terrorists, Islamic terrorist organizations tied to Al Qaeda and, um, a couple other splinters off of Al Qaeda that are, um, currently waging genocide on Christians. They are in places where the government is weak. They cannot fight these forces off in and of themselves. So yes, that is happening in Central Africa as well. Um, and, I mean, just geopolitically, it's one of the reasons that we've been in places like, um, Somalia since the nineteen nineties. I mean, that's not new. What's happening in Sudan and, and Nigeria and other places, it's not new. It's just a different form of what's been going on. And they're a little bit more organized because of the internet and, you know, things like that. Um, and because they're hiring Russian mercenaries, which also, the countries are hiring Russian mercenaries.
And have Chinese-built infrastructure now.
Yeah, China's, I mean, China's geopolitically, just be quite honest, China is trying to, um, raise its sphere of influence because wherever we are sitting, they're saying, we're not gonna send American tax dollars anymore. China's coming in and says, we'll come in and do it for you. I mean, this, this is, this is...
Till their banking system crashes.
This is why we gave, quite honestly, I contacted one of our senators about this. This is why we gave Argentina forty billion dollars, so that they would not go to China. Because China was there with forty billion dollars. Where did it go? So, if you want to talk to your politicians about that, you go ahead. I'm not gonna bring this in here, I'm just saying, you know? Um, so, um,
Where was I?
Oh, so in, in, in the West, so Europe, Canada, America, most denominations are shrinking. Um, Eastern Orthodoxy, depending on who you will talk to, is growing or not. Now, Eastern Orthodoxy is less than one percent of the United States population. So when people are like, our churches are packed? Well, yeah, because you have like three in Oklahoma City, alright? There's not a lot of places to go, quite honestly. Um, um, there are some more conservative denominations that are experiencing some growth. The LCMS is experiencing decline and growth at the same time. One of the reasons that we are experiencing decline is, demographically, we are the oldest congregation in the United States. Our average age is like sixty-eight years old. Okay? So a majority of our population is retirement age, okay? But we're also, so, so we are declining just because our overall population is declining. But we are seeing a rise of millennials and Gen Z coming into church. Because we are, because the church bodies that are experiencing growth are conservative church bodies. And typically, conservative liturgical church bodies. Not all of them, but typically. And we are a conservative liturgical church. And so we are seeing a rise of that. Now again, where do we see most of that rise? We see it in suburbs, right? Our rural areas where we have tons and tons of churches are still declining. And our inner city is a mixture. Some are declining, some are growing, and it all depends on, um, I mean, humanly speaking, it's, there, there is a variety of reasons for that. Some have more faithfully, uh, not faithfully, that's the wrong word. Some have, uh, in, in the past thirty, thirty-five years, they pivoted to be more aggressive in outreach to the local neighborhood, realizing that most of their members were driving in. Um, others are trying to do that, uh, and, and there's a variety of reasons. That doesn't work for everyone, okay? Emmanuel, which is close to downtown Oklahoma City, right? It's got a, got a lot of people living around it, a lot of white people living around it. A lot of very liberal white people living around it because it is in the middle of a certain district. Well, we're a conservative church body. How do you think that district's gonna feel about some of our beliefs? Right? Okay? Um, so there, there's a human list, humanly speaking, there's a lot of different varieties for that. So to answer your question, in the American context, um, most churches are declining. In the global context, um, Lutheranism is exploding.
Okay, when you're saying all churches, it's all denominations are...
Pretty much all denominations are shrinking. Like I said, there are very few that are increasing. They tend to be, um, conserv, every single liberal mainline denomination is declining. Hemorrhaging, hand over fist. Um, never speak, again, humanly speaking, why would I go to Jesus-flavored liberal beliefs if I don't believe in Jesus? The ELCA on Thanksgiving, their social media post was about the travesty of colonization and recognizing how, uh, we destroyed the indigenous population that currently resides in the geographic United States.
How uplifting.
The thing about it is, is that...
Oh my goodness, really?
If you, democrat, so, so demographics is a wide study, right? And if you look at the demographics of people that hold that belief, they're not Christian. And so they're not going to come to a Christian congregation that just reflects their belief, but has Jesus added to it. Because they're atheists. They're evolutionists.
Because they're...
Or, or they are anti-Christian because they see Christianity as conservative and evil. Just humanly speaking on this.
It's why publicly they embrace Muslims so much, because they're anti-Christian.
Yes. So it's, it's a baffling strategy for outreach. Because it's like the people you're trying to go to are rejecting the one thing that's different about what they already believe that you hold. No, again, I'm a conservative. Were there things that were bad? Yes, there were, right?
Welcome to world history.
In one sense, welcome to world history. In another sense, I can't change that. I live here in Oklahoma, right? Land of the red man. That's what our state literally means. Um, like, there's also a lot of good things that happen too.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so, um, you know, and we live in a sinful world. Again, I'm not excusing that away. I just don't think Thanksgiving's the day to have that conversation. To meet persons. Anyway, so, before I get myself in more trouble, even though we're being killed all the day long, the church has peace because of the Holy Spirit.
Also, if you're a church body head, Christian church body head, your message should be all about Jesus. And, you know, not, not a history lesson or not a look back, a retrospective, uh, analysis. Good, right, or not right? A good, right, or wrong? And, um, it's like, no matter what you do, you are sinful. What, no matter who you are, you have sinned.
Yes.
And you need redemption.
Yes.
And come to church to receive the forgiveness of sins and...
The church already has a politic, and that is Christ as Lord. And the church already has... And the church already has an ethic, and that's the Ten Commandments.
We don't need any other politics out there with it.
Well, so, so, and, and so, you know, I said this last year, and so I'll, I'll reiterate it again. Because last year was an election year, this year's not an election year. Our faith does not line up with one political party or another. It doesn't, um, which is, the left realized this in the nineteen seventies. We are now seeing the rise of the post-Christian right. So they're fifty years late to the table. But the post-Christian right rejects "love your enemies" because it's weak, because that's not a winning strategy. And politics is a zero-sum game where you have to win, because if you don't win, you lose. Well, Christianity says, "Love my enemies and pray for them and take care of them." Now whether I do that individually or we as a body politic vote to put in policies for that, that's what we argue about. But the church has a moral ethic and the church has a politic. And the post-Christian right is tired of the Christian right because it views the Christian right as losing.
Well, the churches you were talking about that are catering to the people that hate them, to the people that aren't gonna believe what they say anyways, that's kind of what the Christian right has done for so long. So you can understand why people would feel that way.
Yeah.
Because they're like, "You're catering to these people who hate you, who don't hold your beliefs."
Yep.
"We're fine with your beliefs, they're not, so why are you helping them? You should help us." And then it creates a problem because now you're, have both sides.
It does, it does. And, and so, so you have the post-Christian left and the post-Christian right, and they both don't like the church. Because the church isn't going to support violations of the Sixth Commandment on one side, and it's not gonna support violations of the Fifth Commandment on the other side.
They're waiting for us to waffle one way or the other, and it's not gonna happen.
Pretty much. Um, so. I mean, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's a great time to be Christian.
They're gonna talk ugly about us all the time.
Great time to be Christian.
That's, that, you never know, that's where, it's just the beginning of where the growth will come from.
The Lord brings, right? Right? Discipline starts in the house of the Lord. Uh, that's Peter. So, um, yeah, this, this is great. You know, th- this is why when, when people are like, "Christianity is a dead faith," I was like, "No, no, it's not." I have too many people that don't like me for that to be true. But, but Christianity forms and shapes how we view the world, right? And it has for, for two thousand years.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Which, which shouldn't surprise us because the politics during Jesus' time did not like him either.
No.
Nor did the organization.
No, no. And, and a lot of ways, from the, in a lot of ways, from, from, um, when Christianity becomes the religion of the Roman Empire until today, is the aberration in history. Because historically, state powers have been against the gospel. But when you go to the Old Testament times and all the nations that wanted to destroy Israel, or enslave Israel. So, so having state power prefer or protect Christianity is the aberration. And we're entering a time where, I don't think it's gonna be as severe as Communist Russia or even China. But where there is absolutely, um, no favor whatsoever given to Christianity. That, I mean, that will happen in my lifetime. I'll be older. I, you guys are only seeing the beginning of it. My, my children will really start living the consequences of it.
Well, we're insulated from it because of where we live. If you go to either one of the coasts, or you go to the major cities there, you're gonna run into people that are openly hostile to people.
Yes. Yeah. And, and that's the other thing, right? Is that, you know, we live in a, we live in the Bible Belt, we live in a conservative state. And there is still a lot of overlap between conservatism and Christianity because they were entwined in the nineteen eighties with the Moral Majority. But that's going away. And so what will that look like and things like that? We don't have the answers to that. That's all in the Lord's hands. I still have peace because Christ is in charge. I've read the Bible. I know how it is, okay? A lot of bad things happen, then Christ returns, okay? You can sum up the Bible in three sentences. It was good, it was bad, it's gonna be good again, alright? That's the history of the world. Okay, now that we spent twenty-five minutes talking about that. Okay, so, we've transitioned now to Peter. Now, as Peter went here and there among them all, he came down also to the saints who lived at Lydda. There he found a man named Aeneas, veteran for eight years who was paralyzed. And Peter said to him, "Aeneas, Jesus Christ heals you. Rise and make your bed." And immediately he rose, and all the residents of Lydda and Sharon saw him, and they turned to the Lord. Alright, why in the world include this? I mean, we're talking about Paul.
Well, he's on his Damascus trip.
Well, he's back. He's in Jerusalem now. Well, no, actually, he's in Tarsus, yeah.
Because this is Acts of the Apostles and not Acts of Paul?
Right. It's Acts of the Apostles, not the Acts of Paul. Again, it's a reflection of Jesus ministry. And it's a reflection of the power of the Holy Spirit, right? We, we focus on some deacons, we focus on this guy named Saul. Oh wait, hey guys, don't, let's not forget about the apostles. They're still doing stuff, okay? And, and great things are gonna happen. He was paralyzed for eight years, so he had been not paralyzed at some point. So he was injured, or he got some sort of sickness which paralyzed him. And notice how he's healed. Jesus Christ heals you. The healing comes because of who Jesus is, and it's in Jesus' name, right? They were commanded not to preach in Jesus' name. Jesus Christ heals you. So in case, we, 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 um. Let me put it this way. The Holy Spirit is God. And the Holy Spirit's role in the Trinity is to point us to Christ. And this is almost like a, hey guys, don't forget, the whole purpose of this whole book is Jesus Christ. The whole purpose of everything that was going on is Jesus Christ. So any questions about those three verses? Okay?
That's what, that's what the church needs to focus on.
The church's focus is on Jesus Christ, right?
I mean, quit focusing on the politics and quit worrying about it and focus.
Yeah. I mean. Now, there was in Joppa a disciple named Tabitha, which translated means Dorcas.
Okay, that's, that explains that.
Listen, it's better than Gomer, alright? I always think of Gomer pile. I'm like, Gomer was a prostitute, but Hosea had a Mary. What was Gomer's mom thinking?
There's a little note, a little note in this says that Tabitha and Dorcas, both of those translated to English mean gazelle.
Yes. Yeah. So kind of this, uh, uh, lit, elegance, graceful. She was full of good works and acts of charity. In those days, she became ill and died, and when they had washed her, they laid her in an upper room. Since Lydda was near Joppa, the disciples, hearing that Peter was there, sent two men to him urging him, "Please come to us without delay." So, another part of why we hear about Aeneas is because it puts Peter on the scene. We figure out how Peter gets there to Joppa. Urging him, "Please come to us without delay." So Peter rose and went with them, and when he arrived, they took him to the upper room. All the widows stood beside him weeping and showing tunics and other garments that Dorcas made while she was with them. But Peter put them all outside and knelt down and prayed. And turning to the body, he said, "Tabitha, arise." And she opened her eyes, and when she saw Peter, she sat up, and he gave her his hand and raised her up. Then calling the saints and widows, he presented her alive. And it became known throughout all Joppa, and many believed in the Lord. And he stayed in Joppa for many days with one Simon, a tanner. Alright, that can also be pronounced Joppa, but I'm from Oklahoma, so it's Joppa. What? Um, I had a note in here from several weeks ago. Oh, okay. "Illness does not indicate eternal condemnation." Because Luke writes that Peter healed this paraly-, so we're gonna back up a little bit, but it also applies to, to Joppa here. Because Luke writes that Peter healed this paralytic in the name of Christ, it should not be thought that this means that in the name of Christ, all paralytics must be healed physically, or that those who are not physically healed in the name of Christ are godless. For in Elijah's time, there were many poor widows, and among them, there were without any doubt several who were pious. But he was sent to none of them, as Christ says, Elijah was sent only to Xeraphat and Sidon, to a widow. And there were many lepers in Israel in the prophet Elisha's time, and none of them were cleansed, only Naaman from Syria. So then, by this, all who are sick are encouraged through the example of one sick person, or several, to be of good trusting hope that God will certainly not let their sickness destroy them. Not that they long only to be healed, but rather that they are confident and their sick, that their sickness does not damn them. For we know, Paul says, that for those who love God, all things serve for the best, for those called according to his purpose. Therefore, we who have been called through the preaching of the gospel so that we could become his people should rest in the highest hope in all afflictions and in strong confidence that all our afflictions will aid and help us to attain true salvation through Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with God, the Father, and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. Alright, so. Paul writes to the Thessalonians who are troubled that people are dying for Christ's returns. So in the early church, people thought Christ was literally coming this afternoon, alright? So what's it mean that these people are getting sick and dying? Doesn't mean that God is judging them. And Paul says, "No, that's not what it means. In fact, they will rise first, and then we who are alive will be caught up, okay?" So, this woman dies. Notice, it doesn't mention a son, doesn't mention a husband. Doesn't mention how old she is, but she's full of good works and charity. The implication is that she's a young woman. She's not yet married. But she's a Christian.
She's wealthy.
Probably wealthy, right? She's weaving, okay? She might be wealthy from her weaving, she might be, right? Or, flip side, she's just using some of what she makes to, to give to people. This isn't an important person. In the definition of society, this is not an important person. No husband, no son. And a woman, a young woman, and a Christian at this time. Who is she important to?
Holy Spirit, God.
She's important to God. And she's important to the Christians, right? Notice that the, the widows, um, took, and the widows stood beside him weeping and showing tunics and other garments that Dorcas made while she was with them. So she could have been a widower as well. Because again, we're, we're having to kind of read into the text some clues here. She could have been widowed young. I don't know. She was sick and she died.
But she was helping them too, though. If she had made them garments and.
She was helping them, right? She made them tunics, she made them garments. Literally, you can see her charity. She's important to God because everybody's important to God. Death comes from everybody, for, for everybody. We're all gonna die. Sitting there Tuesday morning at a meeting, and I got the text from Paul. Paul had passed away, sometime between three AM and eight AM. Shocked. I mean, he just entered hospice on Monday. Everybody dies. But we matter so much to God that he died for us. And there is no such thing as a worthless person in the eyes of God. Which means in the eyes of Christians, there's no such thing as a worthless person. Now. That informs our life ethic, how, how we view life, right? And it doesn't mean that we don't send people to prison who commit crimes, but it means that we love them. Um, we proclaim the gospel to them. Because if their hi, crimes are so haenious that they will have to pay the ultimate price for that, where do we want those dirty, no-good, haenious sinners to be at the end of the day?
In heaven.
In heaven, because what are we?
We're Christians.
Dirty, no-good, haenious sinners.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're sinners.
Dirty, no-good, haenious sinners as well, right? Christ died for us, Christ died for them. Now, the effects of our sin are different, right? Um, but it still, it's killing us. This is the amazingness, and I can't get, I, I, I cannot stress this enough, and I keep on coming back to this all the time. This is the amazingness about the reordering of society that Christianity has. When you approach that as your bedrock, that Christ has made me and all people. And that Christ died for me and all people. And the Holy Spirit calls all people to God. That changes how husbands and wives interact. That changes how parents and children interact. That changes how I interact with my neighbor, and it changes how I, it, it will affect my politics to where whatever political party I'm a part of, I will sit there and have to say, "I reject that part of your platform" because that is not in accord with my faith. Now, you can still be a part of that political party, and there's a variety of reasons when, you know, you vote, things like that. But it affects, uh, I mean, it, it, it's going to affect. It's one of the reasons why Lutherans invented public education. So that children could learn to read, so that they could read the Bible, so that they could read the gospel. Before that, your parents had to have money and hire private tutors. It, it has so changed society that you have to go back to the Roman Empire, pre-Christianity, to know what Western society was like before that. And when you go and you look at that, and you look at their values, it is going to, you, you're going, you're going to reject it. You're going to revile it. Because you are not going to see your values reflected in that society.
See, the glorification of some of the things everyone here finds the most repulsive.
Yeah.
Real that.
Yeah. Now, that being said, what have we done as a society? Oh, we've just hidden a lot of those things. They're at acceptable out-of-sight levels now. But, I mean, the. I don't wanna go ever to a pre-Christian society. And, and a post-Christian society is going to reflect a pre-Christian. And, and a post-Christian society is going to reflect a pre-Christian society, because they're both not gonna have Christ. Which is a scary thought. But Christ is Lord. Right? And so Peter, through the power of the Holy Spirit, raises someone from the dead. And again, you get these echoes of Jesus Christ. Jesus and Lazarus, Jesus with the, uh, widow of Aeneas' son. Calling people who are dead back to life. We'll see this again with Paul and Eutychus. Because Paul preached so long that he literally bored someone to where they died. Because they fell asleep and fell out of a window. By the way, that hymn, "If you cannot preach like Paul." Just to say him, right? And these, these, these miracles point people back to Christ. And back to the message. Not to Peter or the apostles, but back to Christ. We're gonna, we're gonna end there because I don't wanna start chapter ten. But, does anybody have any questions in the last four minutes about this? Okay, can we have coffee and wine?